Okay, this is Roger Friedman, the chairman of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. We'll call to order the December 2020 meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. If Mr. Mees is there, if he would take the roll call of the members.
Sure. Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Present.
Mr. Friedman?
Present.
And I am here as well.
Okay, very good. I think the first thing, we need a motion to authorize electronic signatures on documents. If someone would make that motion, we have done this before, to sign off on any documents that have to be signed as a result of the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's taken care of. Next order of business is the minutes from the October 13th 2020 meeting. I think everyone should have gotten a copy of those from the zoning staff. So have the minutes been reviewed? Anyone have any comments or questions or changes that they would like to make?
I'll move. We approve the minutes then from October of 2020.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mees, okay. So moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes from the October meeting are approved. Next item on the agenda, there is a case involving, case number 2019-20MA, and it's continued to be continued to some later date that we don't have yet. So we'll move on to the next case in new business, which is case number 2020-07Z and 2020-08P1. The applicant is Grand Communities LLC for property located at 8760 Montgomery Road. This is for a zone change and a PUD1. Skylar, if you're there, if you could give us an update on that?
Yes, sir. All right, let me switch over to a screen share here.
Okay.
And Mr. Evil, can you give me, can you give me those host privileges on my personal ID?
Let me find you.
All right, here we go.
Should be good.
All right, bear with me. This is going to look a little messy for a second. All right, can everybody see that all right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I am going to be, I'm going to be talking about these two cases concurrently, so I'll just do one presentation. One thing I want to start out with, there are two separate cases here. 2020-07Z is a zone change, and the zoning commission is considering a zone change from B, single-family residential, to D, multifamily. So this particular case is a recommendation only to the Board of Trustees, who will hear this at a later date in January. The other item on the agenda is 2020-08P1. Now, this is a, this is a PUD1. The reason it's categorized as a PUD1 is because of the density. With the, with the density on site, the PUD1 only requires approval from zoning commission. So we do have the potential tonight of receiving an approval for a PUD while, while the question of the zone change itself is, is still out for consideration by Board of Trustees. So any potential approval tonight will require, you know, a condition on that, on that PUD approval. But there are, there are two separate actions that will have to be considered by the zoning commission at the end of this public hearing.
Okay.
So again, the applicant is Grand Communities. The subject property is at 8760 Montgomery Road. This is approximately two and a half acres, 2.731 acres, with approximately 180 feet of road frontage at the right-of-way, not at the center line of the road where the, the property actually goes to. The topography on the site, this is a, generally it's a hillside. The northernmost portion of this is somewhat the peak of the site, and this is sloping generally north to south, you know, with a ravine also on the east side of the property. Okay? Proposed ISR is .39, but the, the underlying density, the dwelling units per acre, is the governing factor for the PUD. That is currently at 9.6, which classifies that as moderate density. Anything over 9.7 would be considered high density. Required parking on site would be 44 spaces, which is, which is two per, two per household. They are providing 54 with 10 additional on-street parking, parking spaces. Okay, so in short, the applicant proposes a zone change from B, single-family residential, to D, multifamily residential, and the applicant is requesting approval of PUD, PUD1, to construct those 22 units for the housing development consisting of townhouses. All right? All right, this is a, this is a general area of the site. You can see in the hashed area from the developer, that is the parcel along fronting on Montgomery Road. To the south is a, is a strip center, zoned E. And actually, let me, give me a long second To the, to the south is a retail center, zoned E. To the north is Planned Office District, where we have new construction of a new dental office. Across the street to, to the west is Planned Retail District, that's double E, with the Mercedes-Benz, Mercedes-Benz Car Dealership. And of course, to the east, we have a single-family residential district, and you can see the single-family home lots adjacent to the property over here. Okay? This is actually an aerial view of the site. We are, we're roughly over Montgomery Road looking east onto the development. Here's the dental office that I was referring to, parking lot area for the, for the retail strip center. Behind here, you can see the residence, the Zone A residential district. Okay? This is another shot of the site. This is coming from the Lynn Chris residential street behind. Now we're looking west onto Montgomery Road. And then an ortho view, a bird's eye view of the site with, actually, from this perspective, up is south. So this is, this is looking south. This would be east toward the, toward the residential area. Okay? Okay, I need to go into a little bit of detail on the Sycamore Township land use plan and how it pertains to this site. The Sycamore Township land use plan in effect right now is, was originally established in 2002. And in the 2002 land use plan, this area right here is our property, and the northern portion of that is calling for transitional residence. To the south and bounding that east property line is open space buffer. Now, in 2008, there was an update to the land use maps. And this blue area here at the bottom here is that same property, along with, along with the properties to the north. This was reclassified as transitional use with office.
How are you? Good.
So, and I realize this is a little fuzzy, I apologize, but we'll, we'll get into this a little bit. There, there is not a true definition in the 2008, 2008 update for specifically tran, excuse me, transitional use with office. So one of the matters that we need to discuss with zoning commission tonight is this, this blended designation. And the zoning commission will need to make a determination of whether this zone change and the plan associated with it is consistent with the designation, transitional use with office. So what I've provided you here is the pertinent land use categories from the 2002 document. We have transitional residence, mixed-use transitional, and then we have office. So I think the heart of the matter is, is this transitional use that also allows office, or is this a transitional use that requires office? Again, that's a, that's the determination that I'll be looking for tonight from, you know, from our board members, our commission members. Okay? Okay, so what we're looking at here is the existing features plan. I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit. Again, currently, we have one single-family home on the site. As you can see, the topography of the site, it's generally sloping north to south with a streamlined, actually bounding, streamliner ravines, you know, bounding three sides of the property. You have a drainage way along this, this southern, or I guess the southwest property line, this eastern property line, and down here at the bottom, the most southern area. Okay, so here's the initial layout of the applicant's proposal. Again, this is, this is 22 units, multifamily, broken up into four different, four different buildings. Real quick, this is, this is where the applicant placed the, their signage plan, the entry monument, which will be on the, I believe it's the north side of the, of the entryway along Montgomery Road. Okay? Also on this plan of interest, we have, we have a main private drive where all 22 lots, or all 22 units will front. However, it's the northern, the northern units will have a garage tucked under the main residence, so it'll be a front-facing garage. However, to the south, the, it'll be a rear entry garage as you go down in elevation. So there is a separate drive or alley, if you want to consider it that, where you'll have to, you'll have to come around. They also are showing underground water detention to manage stormwater on-site, and that is underneath the, the southern drive. Here's a detail of some of the, of some of the buildings, and also proposed color elevations. Again, this would be the, both of these plans are showing what would be on the north side of the property. With the front-facing garage. And this is more like what you would see on the, on the south side with, more consistent with a, with a two-story home with that rear entry garage. All right, and here's a colorized version of the landscaping plan. As you can see, they've, they've tried to densely accommodate the boundary buffer requirements of the, of the Sycamore Township zoning, zoning resolution. There is, to the south here, where they are indicating that there are some, there's existing vegetation that will not be disturbed. Also on here, and let me see if I can clearly show it, I believe there are, there are three designated retaining walls. So there will be a retaining wall along the north side. There's one that will kind of meander along this eastern boundary. And then you have this more L-shaped one, which will go from east and around the south to support the, this terrace here for the, for the alleyway. Another thing of note on this plan is an illustration, a cross-section, if you will, of approximately, the approximate elevation difference along the eastern side of the property. This is the approximate property line for the site. There will be vegetation on both sides of this, and you can see that the proposed elevation here will drop somewhat from existing grade. But you can see that in relation to Lynn Chris Drive and potentially what, what elevations will be directly behind this residential area. So another colorized plan, and I will leave it here for now. If the commission has any questions for me, I'm happy to take those at this time. We do have Michael Cady and his team from Grand Communities that are, that are also here to make presentation and to answer any questions that the zoning commission may have.
Okay, is there anyone on the zoning commission who has any questions for Skylar?
Roger, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Skylar, on the sheet 3.0, there's an indication of the existing right-of-way that, I guess it does not follow the entire street. There's a jog in it. I'm not sure what that jog is up at the northern corner. But there's a dimension that shows 10 feet back from the existing right-of-way, I guess, that comes close to the corner of Unit 1. And I'm wondering, how does that correspond to a normal front yard setback, which would apply, I think, on that boundary facing Montgomery Road?
Yeah. So we can, we can get clarification from the, from the applicant on this, but what I'm seeing here is the, the existing, you know, acquisition of right-of-way from, for, for Montgomery Road. You know, anywhere you go, unless it's a, unless it's a new subdivision, it, right-of-way is acquired very much piecemeal. So this, this to me is not surprising, that right-of-way, you know, kind of, you know, for lack of a better way of saying it, zigzags, or is somewhat erratic as you, as you go down the corridor. You know, typically, track land was, was surveyed all the way out to the right-of-way. And whether, whether through, you know, purchase, acquisition, legal, legal issues throughout the years, it, this just happens. So, let's see here.
Okay, then, but the other half, my question, I guess, is where would you measure your front yard setback from? Would it be from that right-of-way we're looking at, and what is the requirement within this area?
Sure. Well, as a, as a PUD, I'm, I'm not necessarily looking at this as, as a fry yard. The applicant is proposing this to be considered a side yard, and you can see from this plan, they're, they're showing a minimum of 10 feet along this, you know,
Okay, I guess that helps. Unfortunately, I guess, the adjoining parcels all have a much deeper front yard setback that I think when we get into discussion, I'd like to do some comparisons on the property.
Yeah, if we're looking, if we're looking at the, the property to the north, I believe it's, I believe it's 50. Then that would be, that would be for the commercial corridor. Yeah. Sorry, is that what you were going for?
Yes, I'd do it. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Skylar? Okay, hearing none. What we're going to do is first hear from the, from the applicant, anything they wish to add to Skylar's presentation, any other items or information they want to provide to us. And then after that, we're going to move on to any public comments, whether they're in favor of the, the application, or if they have some opposing comments to make. I would ask, I, number one, I don't know how many people have, have signed up to request to be able to speak at the meeting tonight. So I would ask that if you, if you are going to speak, that you do it, but no one's going to be turned away. But, you know, if we have several people simply saying the same thing, you know, if you could say, well, I agree with a certain person, or, you know, they've expressed my thoughts, instead of simply having repetitive comments about what's going on. So with that said, if there is someone here for the applicant to, or more than one person, if you could give us your name and make your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Tepe. My attorney and I represent Grand Communities tonight. As previously noted, Michael Cady and Jason Wozneski with Grand Communities are also on the line. We can answer, you know, a lot of the details that may come up and questions that people may, may have. Skylar did a really, really nice job of just doing an overall presentation and describing the project. Just a couple of the highlights. The request is to rezone the property to D, and also request a PUD1. And going back to the members' questions earlier, the PUD encourages flexible design. So you don't simply measure it as you would a traditional straight zone, you know, with particular setbacks, and if you can't meet those, then you ask for a variance. So, and also by definition of the code, this, this development is deemed to be moderate density. And this makes sense. And we believe that this meets the letter and intent of the land use plan as amended in 2008. If you think about it, the township, if you look at the history of this, is trying to just soften the uses from a very intense retail use, then goes into the office area. In 2002, the land use plan had a requirement for open space. It's not, I noticed that the 2008 update doesn't have an open space requirement in its land use plan. It is 47, 40% proposed open space, which is pretty significant. And land use plans are a guide. They are not law, required by law, but it doesn't mean that you can't look at it. And as things have evolved over time, frankly, it's been quite a bit of time since this was last updated in 2008. We've had a major addition onto the Mercedes dealership across the street, and we now have an office building being proposed or under construction just north of the subject property. So we look to it as a guide, but it's not, it's not law, and it certainly needs to be taken into consideration as things progress and move along. Things change, circumstances change. It also should be noted that this property sits on Montgomery Road, which, like it or love it, is a state and federal highway, which has complete jurisdiction under the agents of the Ohio Department of Transportation. It should be noted also that Ohio Department of Transportation has already given the approval for this development, should it be approved by recommendation of the zoning commission to the trustees. So that having been said, you know, the code has a 9.7% limit on moderate density. I calculated it, Skylar, at 8.9 units per acre.
Can I, can I interject there?
Please do.
Part of that, part of the density calculation had to do with whether we are calculating based on, based on gross area of the lot or net area, net area of being removal of the right-of-way.
Understood.
You're, you're, the applicant actually indicated the 9.68, and, and I just agreed with that interpretation. So that's on the plan.
They can answer that, but I think that's probably a net calculation, because if you go, it turns out to be 8.9. But regardless, we believe that it certainly falls under the definition of moderate density, and we think this is a great project. Again, you've got to take, I think these bird's eyes ideas that Skylar did are very helpful. The client is very conscious of the fact that there is a residential subdivision.
It didn't work on your...
To the east, to the east of this, but it shouldn't be lost, and it's pretty high to retail to the south and to the west. So we, we believe this is a great project, and we ask the GNI up your consideration of the merits here and for a recommendation of approval of not only a rezonation to the trustees, but a conditional approval of the
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tepe. Is there anyone else here for the applicant who wishes to speak?
Yes, Chairman. My name is Jason Wozneski. I'm the Vice President of Planning and Entitlements for Grand Communities.
Mr. Friedman, do you want to place the speakers on behalf of the applicant, besides the attorney under oath?
Our procedure has always been that everyone who is coming to the meeting and wishes to speak is not put under oath. We're not going to change that this evening.
All right. Well, I recommend you do, but you're the chair.
Thank you. So is there anyone else here for the applicant who wishes to speak? I think Jason?
Yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank everyone for attending tonight. I know that this is, there, I can see a lot of participants, so I'll try to make this brief. But I do appreciate everyone coming out in quite a different forum than, than normal. But a couple of things that I wanted to just add on. One is, Grand Communities is the land development company for Fisher Homes. So the quality of the construction and architecture and buildings that you see in the renderings that Skylar put up has all of the 40-plus years of know-how and knowledge and local, local investment and history here in Cincinnati that Fisher Homes carries. It's a new product for us, a more infill-based than our traditional suburban neighborhoods, but it comes with all the, like I said before, all the knowledge and quality that all of our communities have for over the last 40 years. The second thing I wanted to bring up, just because it's going to come up, I assume by the number of people that are attending, and it was an issue at the open house that we conducted on September 9th, but included in your packet was some information about traffic. Traffic was something that we addressed early on. As Mr. Tepe mentioned, Montgomery Road is under the jurisdiction of ODOT. We did reach out to Hamilton County, who then deferred to ODOT about what studies, if any, would be necessary. ODOT does not require a traffic study, or did not require a traffic study for this project, just because it generates such a low... just because it generates such a low amount of traffic. Um, so just kind of rough numbers, um, Montgomery Road carries about 15,000 trips or vehicles per day. Uh, the development as, uh, proposed would add about 118 trips to that. So you're talking about an increase in traffic of less than 1% um, overall. Um, in addition, uh, if the, the, the property were used for something different, office or commercial, it, um, again, based on traffic engineering standards, um, by experts who do such things, it would gen- generate significantly more trips than the 118 that this would generate. So just wanted to get ahead of that a little bit. Um, I think ODOT, and, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, um, ODOT has already issued, obviously, this is all pending plan approvals and rezoning and everything, but ODOT has issued a, an access variance for the proposed access point. So if and when this project is approved, ODOT has already said that that access point meets the regulations and requirements it is looking for. So those are just the two points I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman. And again, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Skylar and, and you and, um, hear from the public.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Tom Tepe, just finally, I wanted to add, you know, those people that don't met on this area of laws, zoning, land use, um, they may not be aware of the significant limitations that the law places on township's ability to, uh, consider traffic in the zoning decision. And it seems counterintuitive to some people, I understand that, that the, uh, the courts have spoken time and time again, and, uh, there are extreme limitations on the ability to deny something based on a traffic issue. That's all I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Certainly, and, and if that were the only consideration, I think I might agree with you, but that could be one of many considerations that the zoning commissions takes into effect when they're making a recommendation.
There are many.
Thank you. Anyone else for the applicant? Mr. Katie?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay, um, we'll move along then. Any members of the public who have signed in, who wish to speak, um, if, uh, we would go along, and again, um, I would ask that you keep your comments as short as possible, but, uh, if you wish to make a point, please do so. And if you find that, uh, the comments that you are going to make are repetitive of what somebody else had to say, you know, you can let them speak for you, or, or simply indicate that, you know, you agree with a certain person who is already speaking. So with that, Skylar, I don't know if you have a control about who's going to speak, or the order that they're going to speak in. Um, quite frankly, we haven't had any public testimony since we've been doing the Zoom calls, so.
Sure, no, I understand. Uh, okay, so, so, uh, I, I have a plan, but, uh, I, I think some of this is going to be trial and error. Um, Mr. Mr. Thomas, uh, Dutch or Deutsch, um, he actually, uh, he actually used the, the, the raised hand, uh, indicator, um, which, which might actually be a good idea for this meeting. Um, so, you know, if we can, uh, I, I'd like to, uh, be, because we have a court reporter on, uh, on this, uh, teleconference, I'd like to limit our use of the, of the chat window and make sure that anything that's been in the chat already, uh, does, does get brought up for, for discussion. Uh, I just want to make sure we have a clear record here and that, uh, everybody's comments get, um, uh, you know, addressed. So, uh, we do have, uh, I did have one request right before the meeting for, uh, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, Brightenstein. Uh, he is, uh, he's, he's representing, uh, some, some of the residents here. Um, and I'm, I'm going to go ahead and open up with him, uh, and then we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that all of these, all of these blue hands are, uh, have an opportunity to speak as well. So, uh, Tom, go ahead and take it off whenever you're ready, you should be unmuted.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Skylar, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, my name is Tom Brightenstein, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Brightenstein Legal Services LLC here in Glendale, Ohio. I'm the attorney for John and Ann Shoney, uh, who reside on Concord Hill Circle in Sycamore Township. Although my relationship is, is, is with the Shonys, I understand that they have been in constant contact with many of their neighbors. And I also understand further that these folks are lockstep in, in, in step with our position. I can't presume to talk to anybody except for the Shonys, but I think you'll find that they're all in agreement. Uh, by the way, a further introduction, Mr. Chairman, uh, the Shonys didn't only hire me as their attorney, I'm also a certified planner. I, I went to law, or to, um, Urban and Planning School at Miami University, Scholar's particular school. I earned my, uh, zoning certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners back in 1992, when I was working for the Boone County Planning Commission. Uh, I'm also the chairman of the Planning Commission here in Glendale, where I live, and I'm on the Board of Trustees of the Ohio Chapter of the American Planning Association. So, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that there's many factors that need to be considered, more than just traffic, and, and I couldn't agree with you more. In fact, there are eight distinct factors that you need to consider from Section 16 dash four of your zoning resolution. Uh, that's, uh, sets forth the, the criteria that you need to look at when you're looking at any zoning amendment. First and foremost, and I'm going to take them out of order just a bit, but first and foremost, and most importantly, is conformity with your comprehensive plan, or with your land use plan. And of course, you know how important that is, that's the vision that the community has of itself. And, and also conformity with the plan is important in order to avoid any unreasonable or arbitrary or capricious land use decisions. So I urge you to, to pay close attention to that. I submit to you, Mr. Chairman, that this application comes nowhere close to being compatible with any part of the land use plan here in the township. Uh, first and foremost, as you've already heard, uh, this property is designated for, uh, transitional use with office. Uh, and as you already heard from Skylar, that particular land use designation is not defined in your plan. Um, but I submit that this development is not consistent with any reasonable interpretation of quote unquote transitional use with office. Uh, as you've already seen from, I think it was the second or third slide from Skylar. Skylar, can you put that back up, the description of the different land use designations?
Yeah, one second.
All right, while you do, I'll just continue, because I do have many points I want to hit, I know the time is short this evening. Um, a- as you'll see in a moment when it's up, there is a land use designation called Transitional Residential. And that is defined in, in your plan to mean, uh, to include attached and detached homes, but it specifically excludes office uses, retail uses, and industrial. In other words, that Transitional Residential is not a blended or mixed-use designation whatsoever. It's a, it's a standalone designation for residential uses only. Uh, below that, as you can see, you have a designation for Mixed Use Transitional. And, and by its very terms, you can see that it includes a housing of various sorts and office uses. So as you can see, that's a blended type use, that's the vision, uh, that the township has given for those properties that are designated for mixed-use transitional. Uh, it's, it's not on here, but, uh, on this particular slide, but there's also another designation in the plan that calls for mixed use with retail. And that's an even more blended type of use, it allows offices, housing, and retail uses. I submit, Mr. Chairman, that the designation of transitional use with office cannot include a blended, uh, variety of different uses. I, I submit that it is really only intended to be a transition that includes only land uses that are office uses. And I say that because the, the, if, if the, it wouldn't have made sense for the leaders of the township to have adopted this new land use designation of transitional use with office, if, as a blended type of use, because that blended type of use is already there. As you see on the screen, the Mixed Use Transitional includes, um, offices and residential. And then the Mixed Use Retail includes everything under the sun except for industrial. So simply put, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, having the word transitional in, in the description of the category does not mean that it opens the door for mixed uses. Uh, instead, I, I think that this transitional use with office means just that, it's supposed to be a use with offices only. And then that's consistent, really, of the land use pattern that, that we've seen established along the eastern part of, of Montgomery Road, uh, and elsewhere in the township. As you're coming north on Montgomery Road, uh, from Miami Road, uh, there's the mixed use. My, uh, Montgomery Point Plaza contains retail and it contains office. Continuing north from our property is, uh, you'll, office uses, solely office uses that are being developed. That's, um, uh, the, the dental office right next to the property, subject property. There's a financial advisor, there's a law officer, there's a learning center, all within the transitional use, uh, designation, transitional use with office designation. It's not until you get to that learning center and just north of that, when you find, um, the first hint of any residential that's anticipated in your plan, and that's the, the Bayard Court condos, which I'll point out later is a, uh, very low-density type residential, uh, totally out of character with what's being prepared here. Uh, one last point, Mr. Chairman, on this, you, on referring to the map. I, I did a quick survey of what other properties in your community are designated for transitional use with office. And it appears from your future land use map that the only properties that are being developed under that designation are office uses. That includes the dental office and the other offices to the north, and more significantly, the property on the corner of, uh, Ken, Kenwood and, excuse me, um, and Marie View Court is property that's designated with the transitional use office, but is being developed not for off, or not for residential, not for, uh, single family, not for attached housing, but for, but for medical office buildings. You know, I want you to keep in mind, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that in 2002, as you've already seen, the land use map designated this property and, and the other air, properties in the area, uh, as, um, uh, open space and buffer with some transitional residential. Uh, and in 2008, as we've already heard, there we, there we go. You see that little green check mark in the middle of the slide is, is, is the property we're talking about. In, in any event, there was a conscious decision by the, the crackers of the plan back in 2008 to go away from residential. Uh, this whole area that's mostly in yellow there and some in green was changed from, uh, residential to the office uses. And, and again, that has been the, uh, development pattern for the bulk of that property to date. Uh, another issue, Mr. Chairman, staying with the comprehensive plan or with your land use plan, uh, it is incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate conformity with all parts of the plan. And, and I submit, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant has failed miserably in this attempt. Uh, if you've read through the application materials, they've only made a conclusory statement that this project conforms with the plan simply because there's already retail in the area, there's already some office, there's already some residential, therefore, therefore, we, we comply. Well, that's, that's not enough. I mean, for something as significant as this, they've got to do a deeper dive. They haven't done that. Um, they also provide a quote in their application materials from your plan, page two dash 18 in particular. They say that, um, the transitional areas, um, that the plan conforms with traditional air, transitional areas, uh, simply because it, again, everything in the, in the, uh, in the general area has become transitional. Well, that, that general quote that is found in your application materials, Mr. Chairman, only applies to, it applies to all of South Sycamore, it doesn't apply to transitional areas. Uh, and, and that quote, again, taken out of context, and, and in fact, the, the full quote from page two dash 18 of your plan reads, uh, "The plan reflects a concern to preserve the character of South Town, of the South Township while at the same time allowing for reasonable, reasonable growth and quality development primarily through relative redevelopment efforts." This plan, Mr. Chairman, does not preserve the character of this part of, of the South Township. Uh, staying quickly with the comprehensive plan still, Mr. Chairman, uh, one of the goals for the South Sycamore area, straight from two pa, page two dash 13 of your plan, is to promote stability of the community and preserving its existing residential areas and planning for new compatible uses. Uh, as you'll hear from the neighbors that follow me in particular, this development does not promote stability of the community and promote the, uh, the residential characters of the area. The, uh, plan also includes a Montgomery Road corridor, uh, chapter, if you will. That part of the plan says that, uh, states that the plan is to provide an official position that property owners can count on. And that's a direct quote from that part of the plan. Uh, my neighbors, or excuse me, my clients and their neighbors will tell you that they have counted on the plan from 2002 and now 2008 to protect their interests. And I think if this plan is approved, it'll be contrary to their interest and contrary to the plan. Back to the general factors, Mr. Chairman, that applied to all zone changes in the county, or in the township. Uh, the second factor is you must consider the recommendation of your professional planning and zoning staff. Uh, we don't have that here, I understand it's not your practice to ask your planning staff to make a recommendation. Uh, that's unfortunate, because I, I can't put words in Skylar's mouth, but I, I think that coming from me as a planner, this is simply not a consistent plan with the rest of the community. Uh, the third factor, Mr. Chairman, from that particular part of your zoning resolution is, uh, for you to review, uh, the, the comments of other governmental agencies. Uh, according to the staff report, there was some review by some of the agencies, but I submit that there were plenty of glaring deficiencies with this outside review. And, and I'll begin, Mr. Chairman, with the, the, the fact that the Sycamore Township Fire and EMS provided no comments to this plan. And, and I think just the common sense review of the design of this development, well, it, it's evident from that review that a, a fire truck cannot properly and safely maneuver this development. It, it's a dead end with no turnaround of significant size for a fire truck. So, uh, again, it's, I think it was incumbent upon the applicant to provide a comment from the fire department. There's no comment that was received, in this case, by the fire department, and I think that's a, a glaring deficiency that can't be overlooked. Um, uh, yes, who said that?
If, if I may interject, um, it, it's not that they, it's not that they didn't review it, they just had no additional comments. They were, uh, they were satisfied with the turnaround, the, the T. So they, they didn't provide any comments, but, but they did review it.
All right.
That, that's, that's the one, one clarification I, I wanted to give you.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know who said that, my screen doesn't reveal who the speaker was.
Oh, that, that's Skylar.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay. Well, and even there, Mr. Chairman, that, that is a comment, that, that it was sufficient turnaround that we didn't have the benefit of in preparing for, for this presentation today. Um, there was some discussion about ODOT. I submitted to Scott or an email that I had today from ODOT, which said that no permit has been issued yet for this project. Uh, I think if you parse the words from the applicant, that they've got, you might paraphrase it by saying that they've got approval in principle for this access, but I think they've given the impression that they've got a permit for this access, which they don't, according to an email that I've submitted to, to Scott for that purpose. There's been no traffic study, I, I appreciate what, what Mr. Tepe said, that the traffic study is, is not necessary and that trap, uh, townships are limited in their review of traffic. But, uh, this is a significant quarter, it's the significant quarter of, of this part of the community. I think that it's incumbent upon the applicant to do something more than just say that the, the green book from the, uh, the transportation engineer says that this is going to be an insignificant increase in traffic. There, there should be, I think, uh, for the benefit of the community, analysis of turning movements and of, of, um, speed and of, and everything else that goes in making this a safe, uh, safe entrance to, to the, uh, property. There's no reference, uh, Mr. Chairman, to a referral to the Regional Planning Commission. I know that the state statute says that home rule townships don't have to submit zone change applications to, to the, um, Regional Planning Commission, uh, but they can choose to, uh, by statute, and in this case, your, your own zoning code, zoning resolution at 16 dash 5.3 says, "We shall receive the comments of the Regional Planning Commission." And again, I don't know if the applicant submitted this application to the, uh, Regional Planning Commission. If they had, I think we would have that, those comments in front of us, but we don't. So I, again, I think that's another factor that plays into the denial of this application. There was no comments from the Indian Hill School District. You know, the, the, this is being touted, I think, as a, uh, a project that will, will be of interest to parents and families with children, because it's located in that school district. But we don't know of any comments from the school district, do they have the capacity, do they have, um, the ability to handle the kids here? Uh, and finally, Mr. Chairman, there's no referral and no comments from the Township's Own Parks Recreation Department. I know that sounds a little bit odd, but again, back to the theme that this is going to be a development with families, there's nothing on this, there's no facility on this project as designed that will provide recreational opportunities for the children who live there. Uh, the, 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 there's nice wooded areas, but those slopes will not be a, a sufficient recreational area for those children who live there. Uh, in fact, I think, uh, that'll simply serve as a funnel to, for kids who are adventurous, to go down to the creek and venture on to my neighbor's property, to the neighbor's property. to go down to the creek and venture onto my neighbor's property, to the neighbor's property by way of trespassing, opening them up for liability. And we're still on this point, Mr. Chairman. There's, there are no sidewalks that are proposed for this project. I, I think that the children who live there, if they don't go to the woods behind, will be tempted to cross Montgomery Road or go up and down Montgomery Road. And this is, this is just not a safe thoroughfare for family residential development for that purpose alone. Going back to the factors, Mr. Chairman, from your zoning resolution, the fourth factor is comments that you received from the public hearing from the, those who are in opposition. I, I think that you'll hear tonight, the only people who are speaking in favor of this application are those who are pages peak in favor of the application, the applicant, of course, and their attorney. Keep in mind, Mr. Chairman, that the developer is from Kentucky. The developer will walk away from this project once that last unit is sold. By contrast, the people that you will hear from after me have a vested interest, a vested investment in this community, and they're here to stay. So these decisions must be made with their best interests in heart. The, another factor from your zoning resolution is the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. You know, that means what it means, Mr. Chairman. But again, I point to the fact that there's nothing in the application materials that the applicant addressed that criteria. Another factor is the economic viability of the proposed district. We have nothing, Mr. Chairman, from this applicant that shows that this is an economically viable project. I think that it will be. Sycamore, obviously, is a very desirable community. The Indian Hills are very desirable. But what if, what happens if, in fact, this project turns out to be unviable? Will these units be converted to apartments? Will they be converted to Airbnb? Again, that would be a disservice to the residents who have established themselves in this community by their investment. And another factor, Mr. Chairman, is that you need to consider the existing and proposed site features on the subject property. As Skylar pointed out, this is a, a rolling hilly site, heavily wooded. The, the current house that's built there now was built into the hillside in a natural way that complements the hillside. By contrast, this development will be a total denuding of the site. In order to make it buildable, they're going to have to build up the site from, from front to back. There's going to be a use of extensive retaining walls that will change the elevation. Now, of course, they're going to say that they're maintaining forty percent of the site for wooded lands and in its natural state. Well, that's, that's sort of a red herring. I'm sure you've heard this before. They, that's kind of a toss away for them because they can't use it anyway. It's so steep. So focus on the sixty percent that's being totally denuded and, and not in a fashion that's consistent with your plan. The final factor from the plan or from the zoning resolution, excuse me, is the compatibility of the proposed use with the character of the area. I, you know the area as well as I do, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This development, three story, three and a half story tall buildings is totally out of character with, with much of the township, but certainly of this particular part of Montgomery Road and of the general vicinity. What you have is low rise, low intensity office uses, some retail, but the residential uses that are in the general vicinity are, to the east certainly, are very low density, very low impact. And to the north are low rise, very low density and very complementary. I, I submit, Mr. Chairman, that shoehorning this particular uncharacteristic and incompatible high density attached dwelling units into this area is not only at odds with the factors that I've just cited to you from the zoning resolution, but it, it would constitute illegal spot zoning. I'm sure that you've all heard of that term spot zoning. And the easiest way is to quote the Ohio Supreme Court that says, "Spot zoning is singling out of a lot or small area for discriminatory or different treatment from that accorded surrounding land which is similar in character." I, I couldn't have said it better, Mr. Chairman. This is a shoehorning of incompatible land use into an area that's incompatible with the surrounding land. Of course, the spot zoning is not only illegal, it is unconstitutional. Switching gears very quickly, Mr. Chairman, to the criteria for PUDs. The, the zoning resolution, again, at section eighteen point seven, sets forth the specific criteria that you need to use to review PUDs. I won't belabor those because there's a lot of overlap in what I've just described, but I just want to point out a few. First and foremost is consistency with the, the adopted land use plan for the township. The next one is compatibility with surrounding land uses. Next one is whether there's adequate protection for the surrounding properties and if there, and whether there's an orderly coordination of improvement of the properties. You will undoubtedly hear about the neighbors from, from, about their concerns about the traffic, but I, I have seen no protection of the surrounding properties. And then that'll pop its, pop its head up in the next few criteria as well. The next one is whether scenic features are adequately conserved. Again, this whole site is being stripped and, and the natural lay of the land is not being conserved. The next criteria is whether this is an innovative design. Mr. Chairman, I, as pretty as the architecture might be, I submit that there's nothing innovative about the design of the buildings or the development. You know, you can just as easily see this development in, in Earlanger, Kentucky or in Corrine Township. Really nothing of, of any innovative style that, that makes, that sells this project to the community. The next question or the next criteria from your zoning resolution, Mr. Chairman, is pedestrian circulation area. There, there's no public sidewalk that is being proposed for this development. I, I note that the Bayard Court Condominiums, which is just a few properties north, has a public sidewalk along Montgomery Road. I'm not sure if the offices that are being developed just south of that between our property have, will have a public sidewalk. But certainly you expect to have a public sidewalk when you have a housing development of this intensity, especially one that's going to cater to kids. Finally, the, the last criteria for PUDs is the adequacy of the provisions for visual and acoustical privacy. That's farcical, Mr. Chairman, to say that this plan conforms to that criteria. They're proposing a ten foot wide buffer at the base of a hill at the bottom of a retaining wall. And, and that buffer, even at full maturity, will not provide any sort of a screen for the, the neighbors on Lynncrest or my neighbors and the other neighborhoods. The, in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, that the PUD criteria are not satisfied, the zoning amendment criteria are not satisfied. We respectfully request that you, we recommend denial of the, of the zone change to the Board of Trustees and that you also deny right out, straight out, the, the PUD. This, this criteria, this development does not satisfy this criteria and any contrary decision would be an arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable abuse of, of the zoning authority of the township. With that, I'll yield the floor, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I'm available for questions, but it's back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brightenstein. I think what we'll do is continue on with any comments. And later on, if there are questions from members of the zoning commission, we can come back to you with, with those questions. But with that said, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, you would give that indication to Skylar so he could recognize you and let you speak on this matter.
Okay, I didn't catch everybody that was, that was, that had a hand raised, but I think the first person was, was it Mr. Duage? Is he still here? I don't see him on now.
I don't either.
Okay, all right, let's, let's move on to Mr. Paul, is it Wordman? Can we unmute Paul?
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Paul Wordman. I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman. For thirty-five years, I lived at eighty-eight oh one Lynncrest Drive. Just recently, I sold that, that property to my son. So I'm, I'm quite familiar and I am directly behind the property in question here. So I'd say for twenty-five to thirty years, as, as I'm sure Mr. Chairman is aware, we've had ongoing zoning issues. And what I would say is that the residents on, of Lynncrest have not shown themselves to be unreasonable. And unfortunately, the zoning board and the trustees have found themselves to be reasonable also. So that's the reason why we don't have a four story nursing home on this same property. And it's the reason why we have low profile offices or, or home offices or businesses moving up the, the chain from eighty-seven sixty. So I think it's, it would be, I appreciated all the comments that were made by, by different folks about, about the, the legalistic issues. But I think anybody that would look at this property would see that it's too dense, too high and too impactful on the, on the neighboring communities. And I put all that in writing and sent it as, as you've indicated before. So anyway, it's pretty, it's pretty evident to me and I think most of the neighbors that this is just ten pounds in a five pound box. And it's incumbent upon all of us to push back until we get something reasonable like all the properties that are being redeveloped just to the north of that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone next, Skylar?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just keep moving down the list if that's all right with you, sir. Next would be Mr. Joe Wordman. Let's see. Are you unmuted yet, sir?
Sorry, I had to take something out of the oven. I apologize. Perfect, perfect timing, so.
If your hand's up, you're on deck.
Yeah. So my name's Joe Wordman. My wife Hannah and I live at eight-eight oh one property, you know, shares the property line with the proposed development. We moved here in May, as my dad said. We have two kids, a four year old and a ten month old. And since I grew up in this house, I'm, I'm very, very familiar with all the things that, that my dad indicated before. And I want to lead with the fact that I'm not against some type of development for the lot behind us, even though I think it's fine as a single family residential or maybe, you know, a few single family residentials are residents. But economics says, you know, likely going to become something different. And honestly, using land for something beneficial is certainly preferable to having one of the only seemingly abandoned houses in the township behind us right now. The lot is, is the only one from the two thousand eight land, land use plan that hasn't found a viable solution. In, in fact, my dad referred to the, the retirement community during one of the zoning meetings. The, the property owner said, "Well, if condos don't work and offices don't work and the senior community doesn't work," he, he, he didn't know what would. You know, there, there's a theme with everything that's been proposed on this lot so far. It's density and maximizing return on investment. There are plenty of things as seen with the adjacent properties that would work. And this doesn't work for a lot of reasons. The, the first proposal for the, the four adjacent plots in two thousand eight was reached really quickly following the land use plan. There, there were fifteen very reasonable conditions set forth by the, by the zoning board. And unfortunately, that plan fell through, but over the...
You're breaking up a little bit, sir.
That have managed to honor those. What's that?
You're breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Last, last ten seconds.
Now, I, I said that, you know, that the original proposal for the, the four plots adjacent were given fifteen very reasonable conditions set forth by the zoning board. Unfortunately, the plan fell through, but, but there were four separate developers in agreements that had managed to honor those conditions with, with really minor exceptions. The community provided minimal resistance to those developments. And in my opinion, the, the businesses aren't intrusive and they're not severely negative, negatively impacting our home values. This development is very different than that and would provide, you know, around the clock noise and light pollution and, and very different than the precedent since been set for the, the properties to the north of it. The proximity to the property will literally remove probably half the greenery in the least dense area between our two properties. And it actually happens to be where my home is closest to the property line as well, just sort of by the, by the happenstance of the shapes of the properties. The runoff will go directly into my property and, and you know, the current proposal leaves no space for the, the visual barrier. It was said before me a little bit, but you know, the, the two thousand two land use plan has two policies I think are really important to, to follow in this. The first one is, you know, it's to quote, protect residential neighborhoods from adverse impacts of proposed development, redevelopment and land use changes. And then another policy that, that says to provide adequate buffering, screening or other techniques with, that will reduce nuisance when a residential development will be next to land use that provides nuisances. I, I believe that, that the rezoning in this development are direct violation of those two policies. I, I asked that the commission decline the, the PUD outright and, and recommend to the trustees to decline the application until a more reasonable proposal comes forth and the proper rezoning could take place at that time. If you don't believe that this is the right course of action, I, I would ask that conditions are set forth, that the conditions that were set forth in two thousand eight for the adjacent properties be imposed on this property. Is it clearly set good boundaries to reach an agreement with the community? In addition to those, those fifteen, I would ask that the green space on the borderline of our property remain untouched and that an additional hundred foot buffer be required. And within that hundred foot buffer, a full evergreen wall that, that would block the light or any view from my property. So thank you very much for your time and for hearing from the public tonight. I know that it's already going kind of long, so I'll cut it off there.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next down the list, and if I, if I mispronounce the name, I sincerely apologize. Next will be Michael Kleinfelder.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Skylar. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first and foremost, I strongly oppose in this development. I also strongly agree with everything that Mr. Brightenstein said earlier. So out of respect for everyone's time, I will cut my comments relatively short. However, there are two additional points that have not been mentioned yet that I'd like to make. Somebody touched on safety, but I'd like to talk about safety in a little bit of a different manner. First off, I'm interested in this because I own a business in Sycamore Township and then I'm the father of six children who attend All Saints School, which is right up the road. And if you look at such a dense development like this one, it's far fetched to think that there would not be kids walking to All Saints School or to Mueller High School. And while there was a comment before that there was no comment from the fire department, I certainly think it would be a drain on resources. And I think the fire department and police department would both have comments if there was an injury or death or something worse to a, a child that was running across an already dangerous stretch of Montgomery Road there just to get to or home from school. So safety's one I wanted to, to mention briefly. And then the second one is with community. Sitting through the earlier presentation from the developer several months ago, one of the things they talked about was how important the community and community feedback was to their project. And they said, and known certain terms, that they would listen to the feedback from the community. So it's extremely disheartening to see that they have bulldozed full steam ahead with their original proposal without listening to the actual feedback from the community, which was quite clear, quite loud on the original presentation. So again, it's getting long, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will, I will save the rest of the time for other comments by strongly oppose this project.
Thank you, sir. Skylar, anyone else?
Thank you. Yes, sir. We currently have one more person that's asking to speak. No one else has done so, and that is Mr. Peter, I believe, Dr. Peter Mallow. My apologies. There we go.
Hey, Skylar, how, how do we say we want to speak?
So if you are on the, so if you open up participants down here at the bottom of the, the list, you should be able to see something that says raise hand. And, and then that'll, that'll signal to me. Mr. Paul Delaney just, just signaled to me that, that he wishes to speak, so.
Very good. I see it now. Thank you.
All right, now, now I'm getting blue hands. Okay. All right, all right.
Well, I mean, we didn't get the connection, so.
Peter, you're up.
Thank you, Skylar, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a resident of Sycamore Township. I live in the south end of the township on Coglar Mill Road. I think my comments might be in opposition to those that live and border the property. In general, I am in favor of this proposed development. Having been in this township for nearly twenty years, seeing all of the different proposals, this is one of the better proposals I've seen that have come for this particular property. And a couple of comments that I would have for consideration for the zoning commission tonight is, is that, you know, it rests in coming upon you as a zoning commission and ultimately the trustees with this particular case and the zone change to balance the entrance of the, the neighbors, the township as a whole and of the private property rights of the landowner. And I don't envy you... And I don't envy you in this particular case, as this has been a property that has, um, had a long history with it. And unfortunately, Ohio law does not provide much in the way of strong planning and zoning rights, um, for this to guide you all that well. But that said, I think, um, the applicant here, as I looked over the plans in advance, um, looking at the area undisturbed by grading is over twenty percent of the property, which is quite substantial, whereas office uses and or light retail with some of the, um, daycare and learning center facilities would probably encumber further on that property. And with that, the, you know, residential zoning under that P U D would give the township a lot more control over the future of this property and that right and opportunity to put conditions that the zoning commission deems appropriate on this. So with that, um, I'll conclude our comments along those lines of trying to find that proper balance of the township as a whole, as well as the neighbors, as well as the, um, the property owners or those that have the right to the property for development purpose. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir.
We have more now.
Move on.
Okay.
Skylar, if I could just interrupt for a second, um, there was a resident who said that they want to speak, a Mr. J Janis Junior, who said he cannot access the blue hand.
Yep, I, I did see that, and Miss, uh, Mr. Janis, you are, you are in the queue. Okay, um. Let's see here. So next will be, uh, Mr. Paul Delaney.
Thank you. Um, as I think we see when we made the blue hand available, that there's a chorus of community members that want to voice their opinion, so I'll be very brief. I vehemently oppose this proposition and, um, really do think that the, the preceding, you know, members of the community that outlined, outlined the contested kind of positions of us as, as community members did it very well, so I'll cede to the community, but just want to be a very vocal dissenter to this, this position, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Skylar?
All right, uh, let's see. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Michael Dawn.
I think he has to unmute his mic there.
Yep, there we go.
We, our property adjoins the property to the east. We're next to the Shonies. We agree with what has been said in opposition to the, the project. This will detract from the view that we have from our home currently and will change the nature of the way we enjoy our property if this property were to be developed the way it's proposed. We are in opposition to it and, um, appreciate those who are in opposition as well and think that there can be a better use of this property rather than twenty-two house townhomes placed on this small parcel of land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. John Shoney.
How do you do? My name's John Shoney, and I believe I saw Karen Mayer also wants to speak.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. And this is my wife, Ann. And, uh, we've lived, uh, we live at eight five nine four Concord Hills Circle, when the two hundred foot range of proposed development. We've lived here nine years, and we lived seventeen years up on Foxborough, so we've lived in Sycamore Township for fifty years. We've had, um, this proposal has caused us a lot of concern and duress, so much that we had to retain counsel. We've had to discuss it at length with our neighbors about the impact of such a project on our property value. As we look out from our houses is situated where the view is that way. And everywhere we see, we see the Wardmans there, and we see single family homes, and we see a single family home over here, set in the, one single family home set in the middle of its lot. Now, this proposal that came, I really couldn't even believe you guys were considering it, but they were going to shoehorn twenty-two three story townhouses and have the, the back end face our home where their garages are in the back and on top of a retaining wall like some parked cruise ship. And with, you know, for what? I mean, what if it doesn't, what if it isn't economically viable? What if they had to turn it into a rental property? I, if someone came here, I'd have to explain if, if I was selling my property, what it was. I mean, what is that big, that big thing there? And it's not an equitable, um, it's not an equitable deal. It's, I think it's nice maybe for Fisher or whoever this is, but, you know, we bought our, brought our property in reliance upon the plans that the township had and expressed in the zoning map, and these plans have never, ever contemplated dense multifamily residentialness on that lot. It's entirely unacceptable to try to put twenty-two units on there. Currently, there's a two thousand square foot house situated in the middle of the lot. What they're recommending is to put forty thousand square feet of building on that lot. So you go from two thousand to forty thousand square feet. That is not very much of a transition, my friend. That is, I, you know, you know what it is. The lighting and the noise of twenty-four hours, car alarms, locking doors will intrude into the peace and tranquility of our neighborhood. You know, I'm not even going to talk about the traffic because the traffic's kind of a no brainer. But we believe that our property values will be depressed by the construction of this two year project. You know, we grow weary of this constant building and construction noise and sound. This will take two years to do. I haven't had, I haven't hired an appraiser at this point, nor should I have to incur the expense to do that. This is an intrusion into our community. We know the values of our homes, and we know the character of the potential buyers in our neighborhood, and we know that those buyers will not like having a twenty-two unit structure of dense multifamily housing looming over the neighborhood. Man, this sucker is going to be up there. And, uh, to wrap up, and I appreciate you guys' time, I know I'm going a little long. We are concerned about the unnatural grading, and, uh, we don't believe that there's going to be any reasonable landscape buffer at the rear of the property line to effectively screen this from our property. We're going to have to look at it, and, and it's going to impact us. And it's really caused us a lot of concern, you know, and stress, like we don't have enough to worry about in twenty twenty. Then all of a sudden, this flyer comes through the door, like, oh, the township's considering this twenty-two unit thing right there. I hope you do, I hope you protect us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So Marion Wright next there, Skylar?
Uh, actually, yeah. So, uh, we have, uh, I'm actually going to jump a little bit. Uh, Ms. Karen Mayer. Let me get her set up. I don't want her left in the, in the queue. Soon as I find it. All right, I haven't quite found her yet. So, uh, Ms. Mayer, you're, you're, you're on deck. Uh, we're going to go to, uh, Marion Wright.
Um, hi, I'm Marion Wright. I live on Lynn Chris Drive. I am completely opposed to this. I know, um, Mr. Teppe, you said, oh, this is a great project and for grant communities, and um, it's great for you because you're going to come in, you're going to buy the property, you're going to help your developers, and you guys are going to leave. I guess what I would like to say briefly to the zoning committee, when you think about this and take your vote, think about it, this was your neighborhood, and you had a nice peaceful, quiet neighborhood with young families that are now starting to transition back in, older families that are still here, and this happens behind your home. I just, when you go to vote, just keep that in mind. It always sounds great for everybody else, but I think you really need to think of the residents that have been here and have supported Sycamore Township and will continue to do that. So when you take your vote, think about this being in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next is, uh, Ms. Karen Mayer, and after that will be, uh, Mr. J Janis.
Can't hear you, Ms. Mayer.
Nope, she's, I've got her unmuted on my side.
Can't hear you, Ms. Mayer. Why don't we move on to Mr. Janis and try to come back?
Yep, ma'am, we'll circle back around to you in one second. All right. Yep. Mr. Janis, you're good to go.
Thank you. I'm speaking as a disability advocate from the renderings and discussion what I've seen tonight. This project mentioned there would be fifty-four parking spaces. On the renderings and drawings provided all of us tonight, I counted ten. By federal and state law, there's supposed to be, for every twenty-five parking spaces, a handicap logotape space. I saw none of that. In previous public hearings, the, the architect, the developer, the applicant frequently says it'll be there, it'll be installed. I, I don't accept that at all. So if you have twenty-two housing units, you have fifty-four parking spaces, but only ten are shown, what are you considering? What happens with the other twenty, thirty, forty? Are you considering concerning parking spaces if they park in a garage? Also, if there's only ten spaces, where, where would the residents and visitors park? Since you can't park on Montgomery Road, would you be parking on a side street? Would that side street, um, with all the additional cars in, would that impede the flow of ambulances, police cars, fires should the need arise? Would it impede the residents who've already been there long term? I think several of these issues need to be addressed. Also, with additional housing, have we taken into consideration the additional needs from personnel for the township? Roads, streets, uh, water, sewer, leaf pickup, snow plowing, police, fire, ambulance calls to these residents? I think there would be an increased cost for services which would require additional outlays and personnel. So again, I'm opposed to this. I thank you for your time and thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Janis.
Thanks, sir. Okay, uh, next is, uh, Mr. Bob Carroll.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, my wife and I moved into the, into the neighborhood. Uh, we're, our house is on Sandy Mar. We've been here for about two years. Uh, we bought a house in nineteen ninety-six up in Calumet Farm up in Sims Township and lived there for twenty-three years. We purchased that home before the building of the wall along I seventy-one, and this project reminds me of the construction of that wall, because that wall, I would say permanently damaged our neighborhood. All the houses that are along Spiral Pass that run parallel with that wall, the noise level from I seventy-one went up exponentially. And I, I feel like it's deja vu all over again, listening to this proposed project in terms of what the noise and the, just all aspects of that project will do to our neighborhood. So I think it's interesting that there are probably, or seventy people on this call who are opposed to the project. From what I can tell, that it appears that there are four in favor. Of those four, I think all, maybe at least three of the four have vested financial interests in the success of the project. And I'll just close by saying I could be, I could not be more opposed to the project and hope that you are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Uh, who we got up next here, Skylar?
Okay, uh, last, if we can't get, uh, get, get, uh, excuse me, Ms. Mayer on the, on here, is, uh, Ms. Molly Martin.
Can I, can I speak now? Can you hear me now?
Oh, Karen?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, I understand it was my earphones that cut off the audio. I apologize, Molly, I'll let, I won't be long. Um, I have lived, my property abuts the property in question here. I have lived here since nineteen ninety-two. Um, I, I totally endorse everything John Shoney said. I totally endorse everything Mr. Bridenstine said. While the, the three story high rise may fit somewhere further down Montgomery Road, closer to Sycamore, if you look at the sizes of the properties here and the houses that sit on that property, some of them have more space than others, but this, this is just too dense. And I would be able to see it from my back windows, and I really don't want to do that. I think it's just wrong. I disagree entirely with the, with the, with it and appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to tell you how much we dislike this and hope that you will not endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next here, Skylar?
Okay, uh, last, we have, uh, Brent and Heather Keller.
Did we skip over somebody?
I'm sorry, that's right. I apologize. Yeah, Ms. Molly Martin.
That's totally fine.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, I understand. I just wanted to go on the record saying that I also strongly disagree and oppose the, um, development, the proposal and development of that property. We formerly lived on Frame Lane, and Mr. Bradenstein referenced the develop, the development close to that street earlier. And that was one of the major reasons why we left that neighborhood was, uh, the huge building that they, uh, that, that they put up there. So we're hoping that, um, it doesn't happen again in this neighborhood. And we also, we emailed, uh, the reasons why we strongly oppose and hope that you receive that email. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we have then Brent and Heather Keller, Skylar?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this is Brent, and I'm with my wife, Heather, and, uh, we just wanted to say a couple of things. First, that we support, um, all of our neighbors that are opposing this, and we want to go on the record for that. And I think the one thing that wanted to point out, um, we live on Montgomery Road, and we've lived on Montgomery Road since two thousand five. We're at A nine thirty-six. And I know they say that the traffic is not as much consideration, but I just wanted to second the people talking about safety. Every night, we have to question if we're going to get hit when we pull into our driveway or pull out, and we're just a single house here. Um, and we're on a straight of Montgomery. We're not on the curve of Montgomery down by, um, the Mercedes dealership. And, um, also just trying to get in and out, like when we want to go somewhere, there is no sidewalks. As people pointed out before, we have to basically sprint across Montgomery to try to get across to the school, to go to mass, to do other things. So, um, you know, I think the safety thing is a big part. Um, I agree with everybody that said the density of putting so many people in there and trying to get in and out, it's just going to add to the risk on Montgomery. And just another thing is, is when we moved in in two thousand five, the whole time we have been told, you know, that these houses along here were transitioned. And the transition meant from homes, staying homes, and maybe turning into offices. That's changed into rebuilding small offices, and that's fine, they still look like offices. But this isn't the case. And if, when you look at the layout, there's basically ten feet around this whole property. A few years back, we asked for a variance of, to try to add a little bit onto our house, and we were not allowed because we didn't meet already the thirty-five foot variance on the back. We're at thirty. So I think, as other people said, is to stay consistent with what has been decided in the past and keep going forward with that. Put something on there that is correct. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Heather, have we run through the raised hands? I don't see anymore.
Uh, I believe so. I've also checked the, the chat comments. Uh, I'm, I'm not seeing anyone else that's, that's asking to speak. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, I take that back. We just have somebody. Uh, Mr. John Masali?
Correct.
I, I just, uh, just want to make a couple of points. I, I, I think it's, it's, there's too many units and there's not enough buffer protection. Um, no matter what you do, the mass of this building i- is, is rather large. And, and I live kind of behind the, uh, the denis office is under construction. I will tell you that in the course of construction here now, three of the trees that were supposedly three of the trees that were supposedly going to be left behind to protect a barrier have fallen down because they've been undermined from the construction, and I know the same thing is going to occur because they only have minimal boundary on that east side there. Like I said, the buildings, they're too big, and you can get a feel for that when you stand behind and look at the backside of the dentist's office from my property, and it's just too crowded and not properly buffered. So I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, Skylar? If not?
I'm not seeing anyone else.
All right, we will cut off the public comment then and come back to the zoning commission. And does anyone on the zoning commission have any questions for the applicant?
I can also bring the plans back up if anybody on commission wishes to see a document.
Sure. Thank you, Skylar. Anyone on the zoning commission have any questions for the applicant?
This is Bill Swanson. I have a question. I was present at the open house when a number of the issues mentioned tonight were brought forth before the applicant. And then to look at the application as it came back after that, after that public forum, it doesn't appear that there were any changes made in relation to the questions or concern from the residents. And I wanted to ask the applicant what their thinking was.
You're breaking up there, Bill.
And if they had considered to make any changes to... I'd like to ask the applicant if they had considered to make any changes to Swanson's concerns of the resident.
Okay. Anyone from the applicant want to respond to that?
Take myself off the mute there. This is Jason Wazneski again with Grant Communities. Yeah, the changes that we made during the... Or any change that we made between the open house and this were minor. Again, the feedback that we heard at the open house, I think there were a couple of reasons why we didn't make some changes to it. One is to maintain the financial viability of the project for us and the land seller in terms of making sure that it was a viable project for us and for them. I think a lot of the comments, and we've heard those tonight, we've heard comments about traffic being too much or things being too dense. And the question is then, how do you define that? What does that mean? And again, when it comes down to things like traffic, I don't know how to address traffic other than to say the experts who analyze and understand such things have weighed in in terms of what it means to overall traffic volumes. And those comments are in, or lack thereof, the no comments on this application tell us that there was not a level of concern or not a level of concern great enough for them to comment on whatever issue they might have been able to or been asked to address, and that kind of goes back to the fire department as well. And Skylar, I know that you said that. So, look, at the end of the day, we stand behind this proposal. We stand behind our reputation as a developer and builder. There are, look, I understand the concerns of the existing residents, and some of those concerns are real and are valid. Some of the other things, again, like traffic, like I mentioned before, you know, how you address that other than how we've put it forth in our application, I'm not quite sure. So we think it's a good project, and we stand behind our application as we proposed it then and with the changes that we've made since the open house in September. And we would ask the zoning commission for a favorable recommendation as it moves forward.
Thank you, sir.
This is actually, this is a side issue, but it's been brought up a couple of times. It's been the practice of the planning and zoning to write no comments, whether or not we we actually receive comments or if it's been reviewed and just no comments have been received. So I can tell you on both of these cases that all township departments have received these, and they had no comments to add. So I'd like to make that clarification for the record.
Okay. Anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant? Hearing no questions, anyone on the commission care to make a motion with regard to our consideration of this application?
Roger, one clarification for procedure. Do we have discretion on both of these together and then under a motion and then retract the motion and do one motion per case? What's the proper sequence here?
Well, I think it would be to consider both issues or perhaps to have someone make the motion that we only consider the application for the zone change first and then consider the PUD second. So I think that's my preference in terms of how to handle it.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
So with that said, does anyone care to make a motion with regard to our consideration of this application?
I'd like to move that we consider case number 2020-07Z as submitted.
Okay. Any second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Flanagan? Okay, any discussion with regard to that? Mr. Meese?
Working on that tricky unmute button there.
Okay, there we go.
Well, I know that this has been a property that our commission has reviewed for many, many years, and we've seen many different proposals, and so I'm a little bit fascinated by the definition of transitional use with office. I understand the argument that that could be maybe interpreted to be all office, but that was not my understanding of what our expectation would be there. I certainly think one of our biggest jobs is to protect the adjoining neighborhoods, which happens to be my neighborhood as well. So I think that other residential use on this property would actually be a good use. Personally, though, I think this plan is just too dense for what wants to fit there, especially given the topography and some of the other natural features. So I'm struggling with the density in the layout.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Yes, thank you, Roger. I've been involved in zoning within the township for a number of decades at this point, and I go back to being involved in the land use plan as it evolved. And I find it interesting that we included the Montgomery Road corridor along there specifically because the properties at the time, going back in the nineties, were considered as having a detrimental impact on their use as residential. And we were looking for some viable alternatives to that. And the presentation we're seeing tonight appears that residential is quite viable on the property. So that kind of goes in opposition to what we had intended many years ago. That being said, I understand a single-family home on that property may not be appropriate. And I believe the land use plans, as they evolved between the nineties, 2002, and then 2008 version, I think it always did intend to have a very low density, as it's referenced in the transitional. The change to transitional office, I think that just recognized that the office demand may be more likely, but I don't think it precluded having residential on there. But I don't think the intent ever was to see density at this scale. And if you look across the west side of Montgomery Road, we have two other multifamily developments or higher-density developments, but even those are only in the four to five units per acre range, I believe. And those are quite viable. So I don't oppose residential. I do oppose having something at this density. There's also reference in our land use plan to preserving and avoiding some of the steeper hillsides. And I think that comes into play here where we're seeing developer encroach well into a very steep hillside. And I think we should be preserving some of that where we have it and not causing the density to increase as a result of an area that's very hard to build. And lastly, I think the front yard, rear yard areas should be looked at closer if there's further development on this site. Specifically, the property to the north, I think, is a new building. We look at what the setback on Montgomery Road is. The development on the parcel that we're looking at tonight, I think would be more appropriate if it had a similar type setup to create the same kind of corridor that we envisioned all along, coming down through Montgomery Road and not building right out to the boundary. And likewise, on the backside, I think if we look at the guidelines in the land use plan as far as imposing on the adjoining properties, this development being built so far back into the parcel, I think is going against the intent of our land use plan also.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Flanagan, any comments?
I think we're very used to having to balance the competing interests of private property development and the neighborhood around. And with all due respect to everyone who's spoken, at some point, your properties are going to face some effect from whatever is developed on there. Views may change. You may have neighbors you like or don't like. That is always going to be a part of it. I do think that transitional seems, if you look at all of the definitions, still seems to carry within it the idea that you could have residences there, and moving from single-family to multifamily doesn't disturb me. But moving to the density of this particular project is just way too much for the neighborhood. I agree with their concerns, but also for the development itself, the enjoyment of the people in those twenty-two units is going to be troubled with many issues like where to park and if you have visitors and the impact of traffic, et cetera. So it's not that I'm against the development of this as a multifamily situation, but something more in keeping with those that are also already in the vicinity, I think, would be more understandable to the neighbors there, less intrusive and more respectful of their concerns, and also better for our township. But it is always a balancing, and so I'm not being critical of the project. Just on that lot with that dimension, it just doesn't seem to work appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson?
I struggle with this because I also agree that in the rights of the property owner to do what they want with their property and balanced by how it impacts those around them. So I heard a lot of things tonight, as well as reading some of the letters that were sent in to us to consider prior to this meeting. There was discussion of school crowding due to twenty-two more units. I didn't give much credence to that. I think we have a great school district. We can handle another forty students or so if we needed to. The traffic note, when I looked and saw that there were twelve to fifteen thousand cars a day that pass on Montgomery Road through here and the addition of twenty-two additional residences, didn't seem to me to be a big concern. Where I did start getting a concern is what you've heard from the other commissioners, has to do with the density of this site. If you look at it and say transitional residence, the idea being is you could have multifamily developments, but it's supposed to be a transition from a more business area to a purely residential area. And I feel like with the density of what's been proposed here, that's not the case here. I would encourage the applicant, if they're not able to get something approved today, to consider the density of that and to consider the impact particularly on the eastern side. That's the only side that really I've heard the major concern are, and that's where most of the residents are. That does concern me. The concept of no sidewalks with a large development like that is also concerning. I know it's not something we as
Where'd you go, Bill?
Commission can mandate happen. I'm sorry?
No, you were breaking up there. I couldn't hear you.
Oh, okay. I'm just saying the sidewalks is also something I had not considered that, you know, we've never had any kind of that dense of a development on that side of the street that might mandate that. And if we were to go ahead with twenty-two units, I think that could be the case. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think from my point of view, I think all of the comments that are made so far by the commissioner are valid and viable points. You know, I think the density is clearly the big issue here. We've had many other applications over the years for this particular property, and quite frankly, having a little bit more dense use of the property for several housing units doesn't trouble me. I just think there are way too many units on this particular plot of land under the plan that's been presented by the applicant. You know, it's like trying to put ten pounds of flour in a five-pound sack. It just doesn't work. And one of the speakers too brought up a point, and I think it was Mr. Janis, about, you know, parking within a unit that is this densely developed, you're going to have a lot of excess parking in places you don't want parking. If people come in there, they want to visit somebody, and all of a sudden, there's no place to park, so they're parking in front of somebody else's property or blocking somebody's driveway. I know that Skylar indicated the fire department doesn't have a problem, but, you know, there are many times that the fire department has weighed in on a development and their ability to turn around or to fight a fire, and we have not approved some developments because of those issues. And I'm just looking at the plans, and to me, I see several areas where there could be problems for a large piece of fire apparatus to get in there and fight a fire. And if the fire department had no issues, I wish they would have put something in writing to that effect. I think that's the least we can expect out of the Sycamore Township Fire Department. So with that said, I think we've all made our comments. I think it's time for us to take a vote on the motion that's before us in terms of considering this zoning change application. So, Mr. Meese, with that said, would you take the vote, please?
Certainly. Ms. Flanagan?
Nay.
Mr. Swanson?
Nay.
Mr. Barrett?
Nay.
Mr. Friedman?
No.
And I'll vote no as well.
With that being taken, I mean, it's our recommendation to the trustees, and they will consider this at some meeting in January, I presume, Skylar. That being the case, I don't know that there's any need for us to consider the PUD one at this time.
I'll leave that to your discretion with... I would ask you to make a, well, you can either table it until after the trustees weigh in. You are making a pretty firm recommendation to the trustees, but they do have the ability to overturn that.
I understand, and I would prefer that we table it until after they make a decision. Certainly, if they make a decision to go ahead with this particular plan, I think there's a lot more detail we would need or want to approve a PUD. And we certainly may want to change some things in terms of approving the PUD.
Okay, I'd at least make a recommendation. Okay, I, I'd at least make a recommendation.
Skylar, as the applicant, can we make a request that you vote on it as is? I believe that's our right.
Well, I, you know, I think that we can, I think that we can table the PUD one. But if someone on the commission wants to make a motion that we voted on the PUD one as well tonight, we'll, if it's seconded, we'll, we'll take a vote on it.
And Tom Tepe, I know as our, as our representation and attorney, I guess I would kind of defer to you on the, on the legalities of it. But our application is, we've made these applications jointly. And again, I believe we have the, the right to request that or would ask that the zoning commission consider, consider both applications in front of them this evening.
Yeah, thank you. I understand the quandary here. I mean, if you have a recommendation on the PUD and the trustees, or excuse me, on the zone change and the trustees adhere to that recommendation, then obviously the PUD application would be voted. I don't think that it would be my recommendation to you, Jason Michael, would be, I don't think it's wholly reasonable to table that to see where the underlying approval goes.
Mr. Tepe, on that, we agree.
Tom, I'll take your recommendation. I'll take your recommendation on that.
Okay, with that said, I would make a motion that we table the PUD until after the township trustees consider the application for the zone change and, and make a decision on that. Any second?
One second.
Second by Mr. Mies. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, aye. I think we have a agreed vote on that. So, so I, I guess Skylar, I don't know if you know the date for the trustees' meeting yet or not?
So it's my understanding that they won't have a meeting until late in January. I believe we were planning to schedule a, a special meeting to address that. So that will be properly noticed on the township website. And all surrounding property owners will be, will, will be properly addressed. There will also be, you know, physical notice on the, on Montgomery Road, on the actual property.
Okay.
One sec. Hang on one second. Are you weighing in? No, so that, that date is to be determined only because the trustees need to schedule a special meeting. So it, it will be properly noticed.
Okay. Very good. With that said, I, I know that we have another matter on our agenda. Maybe we should take a minute for people to clear out unless they want to sit and stay for it. But I think the majority of the people have signed in, signed in for the, the first matter that we were considering.
Yeah, let me make, let me make sure that our applicant is on.
Hey, Skylar, this is Jason and Michael from Grand Commuse. Just want to thank you again for tonight. We'll sign off.
Yes, sir. Take care. Have a good night.
Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The numbers are shrinking.
Hi, I, I'm here from Dove Limited for the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here from Dove Limited for the next item on the agenda also.
Okay, is, is Mr. Ritter here? Is he going to be on?
He should be.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Oh, there we go. Okay, good.
Okay. I think the next item on our agenda is case number 2020-09P2. It's a applicant is professional design associates for a property located at 8469 Blue Ash Road. And the request is for a PUD two. Skylar, if you could give us an update on this?
Yes, sir. One second. Let me get my screen share together here. There we go. All right. All right, can everybody see that?
We can.
All right, good. All right, this is, this is case number 2020-09P2. Applicant is professional design associates. This is 8469 Blue Ash Road. The site is just under two acres with actually two frontages, one on Blue Ash Road. It's actually, it's actually up against the railroad.
Right away.
Then Blue Ash Road. That's 750 feet. And then Voorhees Lane to the, to the west at 784. So existing ISR is 81. And it's actually getting a reduction through this, through this process to .79. So the applicant is requesting a PUD two to construct a new paved parking lot to replace the existing gravel lot for a new tenant on site. So this is the, this is Rossmoyn area. As you can see, we have Blue Ash Road and the, the railroad right away on the east side. Here is Voorhees here. And at the bottom here is Sycamore Road where they converge. I'll zoom in on this a little bit. This is our zoning map of the site provided by the applicant. The, the property is currently zoned F, light industrial. To the north is additional light industrial properties. To the, to the south, we also have, excuse me, we actually have light industrial directly south. And then over here to the, I guess we'll call it southeast is, is Zone E retail. On the true east side, we also have C, single family residential. And then on west, we have C, single family residential, as well as the stub into a planned multifamily development. There's actually, I believe, an entrance right here. Oh, a little out of order. Sorry. Okay, so what we see here, this is actually the, the old lubers and dampers manufacturing company building that was built mid-century, I must say, right after World War II, maybe, maybe early 1950s. 25 years ago, the, the, the building was purchased and has since been broken up into a multi-tenant commercial building. Mixed use, so there, there is some light manufacturing as, as well as some office space in here. The southern, the southern section for, for several years has, has been vacant. But the property owner has, has found a new tenant for this. The application actually, actually states that this is going to be DoorDash is going to be operating out of this facility. In order to facilitate their, their tenancy, the, the property owner needs to make improvements to the exterior of the building, including a, a new parking area over here. The southern parking lot is currently gravel. And they are proposing a, a new paved surface with additional parking spaces as, as well as kind of a drive-through area for, through their business model, DoorDash, there will be drivers coming to pick up supplies and then, and then sending those out. So the applicant is taking this opportunity to, to make improvements to the site. As I said before, the, the, the current ISR, impervious surface ratio is at .81. Through this, they are actually, even though they're expanding over here, they're actually cutting out some of the, some of the existing parking area over here to create, to create a, a, a buffer yard, a boundary buffer to incorporate landscaping. So this is not truly entirely, I suppose, brought up to, to current standards. But based on, based on the configuration of this lot, I, I think the applicant is, is making a best effort to, to make some improvements and, and bring it into, into conformance or reasonable, within reasonable limits of it. So we have additional landscaping on the north side. There's already landscaping along the front of the building. Keep in mind that this is actually a, a, a bermed area here where the railroad is. There will be landscaping surrounding this new parking area. And then there are existing trees to the, to the south of the property. See. Oh, this is just. There you go. That's just a close in of, of the new parking area. I think. The other, the other exterior feature that, that should be discussed, currently the site has a dumpster on the, the north parking lot. There's no enclosure currently as part of this application. The, the applicant is proposing a, a block structure, three sides with, with proper screened, screened doors. And that is in conformance with code. Actually, I apologize. I thought it was in this application. They color rendering there someplace.
Yeah, it's there.
There we go. So there, there is a color rendering of the site. Okay. And this is, this is a fairly straightforward application. Again, this is a, this is a building, a commercial building, well established in the community. You know, the applicant's taking these opportunities while, while getting a new tenant to, to, to make exterior improvements to the site, to bring it in conformance with code. So with that being said, the only thing that's not really addressed is on, on this plan is any exterior signage. And my only comment is that any additional signage shall fully comply with Chapter 13 of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. Okay, stand available for any questions?
Okay. Anyone on the zoning commission have any questions for Skylar? Okay. There's anyone here for the applicant who would like to speak on this application? If you would identify yourself, give us your name and make any comments that you wish to make in regard to the application?
Yeah, tha, tha, thanks for hearing our application. My name's Jim Ritter. I'm an architect with PDA. We thought the right thing to do here is, is to provide a buffer between our remodeled parking lot and the, the residence to the west. And so we complied with, with your standard to do that. And the, the buffer that would be built on, on the west side actually is all hard surface and pavement right now. There was a truck dock on the west side and we want to eliminate that truck dock, obviously. And we're just trying to be good neighbors and provide a better end product for everybody.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Anyone else from the applicant wish to make any comments?
I don't have any comments. If anyone has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that they may have. My name is Doug Messer. I work with, with Dove and the owner, 8469 Blue Ash Road.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else listening in who wishes to make any comment or ask any questions?
I'm not from the community, assume, at this point?
Sir?
Yeah. From the community?
Yes.
I raise my hand. I'm not sure if I'm first or somebody else's first. Let him go. I have no problem with that.
Mr. Janus, you're on deck.
I'm ready to go then?
Yep, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Cool. I want to preface this first by saying we live right across the street on Voorhees from this development. And I want to preface this by saying Dove has been phenomenal neighbors. Okay, we've been here 23 years. No issues there, nothing. So I want to preface this with good stuff. I also want to preface this by saying I have nothing against a development of this nature such as DoorDash. This is kind of the direction our society is going in, this instant gratification type, deliver it to your home. Obviously COVID has really pushed this and I have no issues with that. Some of my concerns, number one is traffic. I work in the last and final mile industry, so I understand this kind of side of things a little bit. One of my challenges to this would be the traffic. One of the things it said, it said in the documents were similar operations as current tenants. Challenge, I challenge to look at other similar businesses. Granted, this is not Amazon by any, by any, you know, stroke of things, but it is still a, that type of industry where you've got drivers coming in constantly. Okay? I looked up this DoorDash, they're opening eight of these facilities nationwide. And the concern there is the traffic. You know, we've, and I, and I, I kind of challenged to do a traffic analysis on the street. I would guess, you know, 75 to 100 cars a day, there-ish, about-ish. I would challenge us to do a traffic analysis on other similar bill or, or business of this type. If you go with just a standard number of, let's say it's 500 deliveries a day, and that seems like not much, or it seems like a lot, that's not much in this type of space. So if you factor a driver takes two, two deliveries with them, they're promised in a 30, 30-minute type delivery. Your drivers are going to be coming back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You have the potential to add hundreds of, hundreds of trips a day down Voorhees Lane. Okay, so my challenge there would be, let's do an analysis on this. I believe that you're going to see that the traffic change is going to be a whole lot more than what's being proposed. And I'm not, that's not a dig on anybody. It's just, it's the unknown. This is a brand new thing for DoorDash, but I just challenge that that happened. Secondly, is the, is the, I think that was bit, it's probably, I, I know they said low-key operations. Again, kind of that same thing. This is a, these are drivers coming in, going out, coming in, going out, coming in, going out. That, that street is a major thoroughfare for kids. Folks walking their dogs. I mean, that's a major thoroughfare for kids and families going down to Becktoole Park as well as Brookside Swimming Pool. So I was just challenged to take a look at that. That's, that's probably my biggest pieces is, is I just challenge that we do a little bit more due diligence on this. Again, I have nothing against this and type of, this type of business. I work, I don't, I don't work in direct competition with them, but I work in this similar industry. So I understand, you know, DoorDash's model. They, they've got investors to please. So they're not going to come in here and say, we're going to limit it to this many deliveries. They're going to push, they're going to, if they're putting in eight locations nationwide, they're going to pour advertising and marketing dollars into this. Their goal is to satisfy their investors. They just went, I, they just did an IPO. If you're familiar with that, so, and it's a 3.4 billion initial purchase IPO. This company is growing huge. They're not going to put a facility in here that's going to sit and be status quo. They're going to drive business into it. And I believe you're going to see that the increased traffic here is exponential. So, you know, just things to think about. You know, do, do you reroute traffic? Do you re, I mean, do you, just being transparent, do you look at properties across the street, you know, talking with property owners, things like that? I believe this is a big undertaking. Again, nothing against it. I think it's good for the community to have a name like DoorDash in the community. But I think you need to look at the entire picture, top to bottom. to have a name like DoorDash in the community, but I think you need to look at the entire picture, top to bottom, as far as traffic, do the analysis and things like that before we kind of jump and say, bang, we're off to the races. I think there's a lot more to this than what's, what's on paper, and it's simply a new thing that we need to take a look at of, hey, what's this traffic going to look like overall for the community in general, if that makes sense? So, that's kind of my biggest things to, to point out.
Hey, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Janus?
Janus, I think you have the.
Can you hear, can you hear, can you hear me now? Okay, I didn't see, at least from what I can view, what is the total projected amount of additional parking spaces once they have the paved lot and the number?
Yeah, they requested four spaces.
How many?
Fourteen.
Four zero?
Twenty-two zero, I believe.
Two zero. I'm sorry, okay. And I guess it goes with my comment on that, and I, then I didn't see it from my, the early meeting. Obviously, as a disability advocate, I would hope they would have at least one handicap parking space in there.
It's shown there.
Okay. It was difficult for me to see from out here, okay? And then my other question is, and from what the Mr. Anderson said, and um, I'm assuming this would be twenty-four, twenty-four-seven operation for the DoorDash people. And um, again, that might be some wear and tear and noise for the, the residents there. Um, and then on the paid issue, the paid spaces, and I talked with this with the zoning department earlier on some other issues, but my concern just overall, when businesses come in or residents come in and they do some paving on grass, gravel, dirt, frequently, the runoff goes to adjacent properties. So I guess my concern is, has this been taken under consideration by the zoning department? Is it likely that if that's paved at a missional amount of twenty-nine spaces, possibly should it rain, snow, melt with that water, excess overflow be, be flowing out onto the residents into the property on the west side of Voorhees Lane?
Well, if, yeah, I could address that. We'll have to go to Sycamore County Snowwater to review. But we, we, the parking lot area, we have more stock there than we do have. Now, next thing, it's going to be the stock and, like, the entire landscape is, is done. Right now, it's, it's gravel, it's gravel and pavement, that's going to be removed. And um, most of it is going to be. Um, as I understand it, if you go there, they would, they would receive two major deliveries.
Hey, I'm sorry. Hey, Jim, I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can everyone else mute?
Okay. Yeah, as I understand it from DoorDash, they're to receive two major deliveries every week. And, and that would be through the large overhead door, it's there on the south side. And then they, we've been told that they have somewhere between eight and ten employees that work there every day. And what they want the additional uh, parking spaces for is for their, their delivery people to come in, they pick up the product, and, and they use the other eight to ten spaces, and they go out for four or five hours at a time making deliveries. Have, have, have we answered most of the questions there? Hello?
Yeah, Jim, we, we heard you. I, I guess.
Can you hear me back now? I'm sorry, can you hear me back now?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your time and your, your responses back. And based in the true normal of COVID, seems like many businesses are permanently closing. And since I live relatively proximate to that, not immediate or adjacent, but in the area, um, I think it would be a viable option to have a new business in the Sycamore Township. So, based on what's presented tonight, then I would be in favor of it, and thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the public wish to make a comment? I don't see any other hands up there, Skylar, so uh, um, does uh, anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Rich.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Ritter, I didn't quite follow your last comment about uh, deliveries. Since uh, Mr. Anderson had brought up the traffic uh, analysis and all that, uh, could you clarify, I guess you have, you said a certain number of employees, eight to ten, and they go out for a four-hour, five, four-hour delivery shift? So, is each one of those, like, in and out, um, two trips per day, plus their arrival and departure for work? Seventy-three trips per person?
I, I don't know for su- I don't know for sure, but, but we need to get with them and find out what their traffic pattern is. I, I know they're talking about having ten, seven to ten employees, and they, they need the additional spaces for the drivers to come in and pick up and go.
Okay. Uh, we actually had one more person, Mr. Jim Dalton? That wishes to speak?
Yes, thank you. Um, comments are brief. Uh, I have, I live just around the corner from there on uh, Cuglin Hill. I just have some of the same concerns as the, the other two, just the traffic. Uh, there is a lot of foot traffic down through that street. Uh, I'm just very concerned about that, since there's no sidewalk. Uh, and just uh, just general noise. I am, I am somewhat interested in what the uh, uh, hours of operation would be at the facility. Uh, other than that, uh, the, 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 the site plan itself, uh, I have no problem with that. The, that looks fine to me. I, I see no problems there. Um, uh, that's it. Uh, turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Roger.
No, go ahead, Ann.
Um, I'm just wondering, I, I do want to know that, is it a twenty-four-seven? That's one question, but also, what types of foodstuffs are being stored at this facility? And I, I just uh, want to know if it's being refrigerated, the disposal, how often is the dumpster pickup? Those kinds of things that might affect residential, residences surrounding the area?
The way it was described to me is it would be like a, a CVS. The same goods that you could buy at CVS would be, would be found i- in, in their store, in that warehouse.
Uh, in other words, they're going to have racking. If you look at the floor plan, they have about ten or twelve coolers and freezers around the perimeter of the floor. And in the center, they have shelving, stock shelving. So, they would handle laundry detergents, they'd have cleaning supplies, they'd have Pepsi, Coke, ice cream bars. Uh, y- y- you walk into a convenience store and they'll have that stocked. And that's why they have one, two major deliveries from trucking companies a week. And then the small deliveries occur day-to-day. I think Doug or Ray from Dove would know better about whether it's a twenty-four-seven operation or twelve hours or what.
Well, I, I get I, I'm going to assume it's on demand, which would mean if there's a demand for something at three in the morning, they're going to facilitate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Um, any other questions for the applicant? Anyone care to make a motion that we consider this application?
Oh, well, uh, I move that we consider case number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-nine P-two. Um, with the recommended staff comments.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Okay, any further comments? Uh, Ms. Flanagan?
Mute. Un- unmute.
Nope.
I don't know that we know much about the dumpster pickup currently, but I guess I wouldn't mind seeing that it's during daytime hours, uh, reasonable morning hours rather than at.
But, yeah, the, the township does have and, and does enforce, uh, uh, you know, a noise resolution, excessive noise.
So we wouldn't.
So, um, you know, so garbage pickup, things of that nature should not, should not occur. Uh, I believe, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but I believe it's seven AM to, to ten PM.
Eleven.
It's eleven, yeah. Uh, is, is reasonable hours. Anything, anything past that, you would be in violation of the uh, the, the noise resolution for the township.
Okay, thank you, Skylar.
Thank you, Kevin.
Welcome. Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Uh, I had uh, similar concerns, I guess, on the traffic when I looked this over without uh, understanding the business model in totally, and uh, uh, I think we heard more questions and answers uh, in discussion, and uh, I think it would be uh, appropriate to uh, ask the applicant for additional information on that before we do a final consideration.
Okay. Mr. Mies?
Nothing further.
Mr. Swanson?
No comments or concerns?
Okay, uh, myself too. I, I tend to agree with uh, Mr. Barrett. Um, that, that I do have questions, and in, I think one of the big issues is the, the twenty-four-seven nature of the operation. Um, and I di- I just did a quick look uh, online, wh- what kind of business plan DoorDash has. It, it appears that they have something very close to a, a twenty-four-seven operation. Um, not that that is the be-all and end-all, but uh, um, I, I think it would be good if we could, you know, finally determine that. Um, and also, you know, determine if, if uh, you know, perhaps we need to put some restrictions on the number of vehicles that are, are using that property, uh, you know, during the nighttime hours, so.
Are you suggesting that we ask for further information and ask the applicant to table the, the proposal, or how, how, how would we gain that information?
I, I would prefer that we, that we have that information before we make a decision, but um, that's going to.
I would, okay, I would assume that it's twenty-four-seven, that they're going to do it. I would also assume that after eleven o'clock, the amount of traffic is going to dramatically decrease. Um, not too many people would need toilet paper at three in the morning, um, but there will be some people out there who will want it. Um, I, um, I, I would also say that th- this building has been here since nineteen forty-eight, probably before a lot of the homes in the area uh, were there, a- and this is uh, a building that's been a challenge for us to get leased, to find a quality tenant um, so that we can make the improvements to the building that uh, we would like to do. Um, and we've been working forever to find that quality tenant, and, and, and we, we feel we have. Um, and we're going to be making a substantial investment inside the building, uh, as well as outside the building, and um, and, you know, we want to be good neighbors. It's important for us to be good neighbors. Um, um, but I, I, I will tell you, it, DoorDash is, is, is investing money as well, and they're going to try to maximize their investment, a- as you know.
Right. I, I'm just wondering if, you know, if it's possible to impose a restriction on the number of vehicles that are running in and out uh, between, you know, ten PM at night and um, six the following morning.
That I can't answer without talking to them.
Uh, i- if I, if I may offer, I, I don't want us to get it to, to an impasse on, on this item. Uh, this is a PUD two, uh, so it will have to go in front of Board of Trustees. Um, while you may act on this differently, um, you, you may want to raise this concern with the trustees, and uh, that will also give the applicant opportunity to uh, uh, to prepare a, a fuller, thorough response uh, that, that will still be heard by the township.
Yeah, it, you know, I, I know where the building is, and, and I, I can understand, you know, the difficulty in, in fully util- utilizing the building. I'm sure DoorDash is, you know, um, they're going to be a responsible company. I, I think the, the traffic is, is an issue, especially during the, the nighttime hours, uh, so. Um, you know, I, I think perhaps if we uh, were to consider this, and besides adding the uh, the comments in the, the staff report, if we make a recommendation that um, the trustees um, consider some restrictions on the use of the uh, the property during the nighttime hours. Uh, maybe we can come up with more information and have the trustees make a final decision um, about how to handle that.
I'd be happy to amend my motion to include that.
Okay, if you would, please.
Certainly. So, uh, I believe my initial motion was to consider the case along with the staff comment, which Dove was signage complying with the zoning code, and also a second uh, condition that the trustees um, consider the placement of certain restriction on traffic, um, the use of the property um, during e- nighttime hours.
Right. I mean, you know, this, this could be in a location where they're, they, they do not anticipate much nighttime hours at all, you know? So I, I don't, I don't know, you know, but they can, that, there certainly would be time to get some more information and answer those questions.
Right. For, for me, I think the, the improvements that are proposed to the building, I think that those are fantastic. I think that the use of a new tenant there, I even like the use, I think, is a good service to the community. Um, this is the, the traffic would be the only concern about the proposal that I have personally.
I, I, I would agree with Bill. So, based upon your motion, anyone have a second?
So I second the first time around. I guess I'll second the, the motion.
Good idea, Rich. Uh, so, if, if there's no more comment, uh, Mr. Mies, if you would take the roll call vote there?
Certainly. Uh, Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Okay, so this uh, also will go to the trustees for their further decision. Um, Skylar, do you know when they might hear that, or is this going to be a special meeting for the trustees as well?
Uh, this will be a combined special meeting, yes, sir. So um, uh, it, it's something that we will, again, properly notice, but I'll have to uh, uh, discuss it with the township administrator first.
Fair enough.
Who are the trustees scheduled to meet um, before we meet again or after?
Uh, there is a, so there's a, there's a workshop uh, scheduled um, scheduled tomorrow, but I don't believe they have a regular meeting in January uh, until, until after um, zoning commissions. So, I believe they're, they're not going to have a um, an early meeting in January, based on the new schedule.
All right, so this will come before them in February most likely, unless there's a special meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I want to thank you for hearing our case, and we'll give it DoorDash and find out what their traffic load is and how they, how they work their system.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Take care.
Okay. Okay. Gentlemen.
Thank you.
And then uh, Skylar, moving on, uh, do the uh, trustees have anything to report that they want to tell us about?
Uh, no, sir. There's, there's been uh, no, no communication or request for communication at this time. Um, uh, we are, we are still moving forward with uh, uh, land use plan improvements, as well as a staff review of, of um, the, the zoning resolution. Um, you know, there's, there's been other projects, uh, COVID uh, related, um, you know, strategic purchases, things of that nature that have uh, taken up a lot of time uh, with, with township staff. Uh, so, I do apologize for the delays. Um, it's still, it's still very much on, on a front burner for me. Um, so we, we'll get this done as soon as possible.
Skylar, what's the status of the land use plan?
Uh, land use plan is uh, we'll, we'll call it ninety-five percent complete. Uh, it, it took. Uh, it, it took longer than expected to work with, to work with cages to, to give me access to, uh, uh, mapping software. So I'm, I'm trying to finish building, building some maps to, uh, to reflect the, um, you know, the, the policies and concepts that, that we've talked about with the, the Land Use Steering Committee. Uh, so, so basically as soon as I can put that all together, um, I can get, I can get a final approval from that, from that committee and then bring it to you.
So- Does it include a definition of transitional use with office?
Uh, we, every, every designated use is going to have a definition. So I, I don't plan on keeping necessarily that, that same, uh, category.
Got it.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yep, other, other than that, if, uh, if, if there's nothing else for me, I, I, I wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Same to you.
Same to everyone.
Anyone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Swanson, seconded by Mr. Meese, whether he knew it or not. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned and happy holidays to everyone.
Have a great Christmas.
Happy holidays.